Since it's 3:30, I'll call the Joint Planning Commission and Moratorium Committee Meeting to Order.
The moratorium meeting is called to order. May we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Kyle, do we have any changes or?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. And it's the minutes from...
We're thirty buddy. We're thirty buddy. We're thirty buddy. One minute. One minute. He's on his way.
Since it's 3:30, I'll call the Joint Planning Commission and Moratorium Committee Meeting to Order.
The moratorium meeting is called to order. May we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Kyle, do we have any changes or?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. And it's the minutes from...
It's September twenty... Oh, I don't see.
I don't think there's anything.
I don't think there's anything.
I guess they're not included.
No. So I guess we can't really approve the minutes.
We'll have to double up next time.
Yeah.
Should we strike it from the agenda? Would that be appropriate or?
Yes, we should probably strike it.
Or could we table it? Because we'll take it up at the next one or should we just strike it from the agenda?
Yeah, why don't you just postpone until the next meeting because you don't have it?
I move we postpone the approval of the minutes from the last meeting until our next meeting.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, the next item on our agenda is proposed language for CIP Energy Response Cost Recovery Provision. Kyle, want to speak to that?
So Mr. Chair, actually I'll defer a little bit to CIP themselves. I believe their attorney and our legal counsel have been working together to an extent to determine what may be the best approach for any kind of cost recovery on them. This may also have been an item that I know Attorney Kaufman was dealing with prior to Mr. Thaw coming on board. So I actually will, if you don't mind, defer to their team a little bit more on this topic.
Okay.
Hello, everybody. Our attorney respectfully is a little bit late. He'll be here in a minute, so if we can skip over to another point and then come back to this one. Turns out he is right outside somewhere, three minutes late.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
In that case, let's move to Fire Chief Matt Bocham. His email or would you like to speak to it?
I'll tell you what. I'll answer any questions you might have.
Okay.
I can describe everything I can. I'm not sure. We were approached to see what ideas on the ordinance would support the fire department or could support the fire department. So we just thought of kind of a gamut of things that would or could support the fire department in particular for consideration of this process. So we have a laundry list of items and ideas. So some of it may not make sense and it was a bullet point email. So if you want me to go through it, I'm happy to do that.
I have a question.
Sure.
So how did you go about gathering what you thought you needed? Did you contact other states? Did you contact states that have alternative energy sites? How did you go about gathering all the information that you're requesting?
Basically, the best practice of how to mitigate hazardous materials incidents and then other fire departments, what they have had, you know, success or failures that we read online. So we didn't get a lot of feedback from actual causes because some of it is technology specific and not knowing what exactly technology it is, specific to what cells, cellular level of the battery could be. It could be a little bit different. For instance, monitoring equipment, it could depend on what exactly technology goes into that. So we used some more hazardous materials approaches to it that was pertinent to the concept.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions for Matt?
Matt, if you don't mind going through them just from your perspective to maybe, there's a list of them and a quick emphasis on what would make it important from your perspective.
Okay, sure. So if we go down the equipment considerations list, two-way radio, that's a basic function that we would need for any sort of firefighting or hazardous materials operation. So if we were mitigating the incident directly or if we had to isolate an area or evacuate an area, we'd need to coordinate those efforts with our responders. So I specify that we have to work within the Kalamazoo County Dispatch Authority specifications. The number of personnel we have by the estimated cost per radio for portable and mobile radio applications. Thermal imaging cameras. This is something that would be used for any sort of fire hazard materials approach to see if there's a change in environment. And on it, we noted cameras that would be used at the crew level, which is a larger camera, as well as a smaller awareness level that a person would wear on, but it wouldn't be as, pick up the heat index as accurate as a large camera. Personal protective equipment, firefighting equipment is something that, you know, we would need for, to survey the area, evac the area, to protect our personnel. To go along with personal protective equipment is self-contained breathing apparatus or what we refer to as SCBAs. So if we were to approach an incident to survey it or if we were evacuating an immediate area, we'd have to protect our responders' respiratory system. Monitoring equipment, foregassed and photoionization, so the byproducts of combustion could be detected so it'd help us survey the area to determine how far we need to go out for an immediate and a longer term operation. Another idea we had was a, and we thought this was a little unique, was a bidirectional amplifier. So if there was any government building or school building within X amount of feet of the facility, kind of left that open, is that it would allow us to ensure that we didn't have dead zones in the school or a building. So if we go into a building, sometimes our radios don't work. So we'd want to ensure that we had, you know, up-to-date latest communications available to our responders so we can go into a building and go, hey, we got reliable communication. Otherwise, steel and concrete can blur out the radio traffic. So BDA's is what that refers to. So if there was a building that met a certain specification, again, this would take a little more work, but we thought that it might be something worth noting. And finally, an idea that came across was drone technology just for essentially surveying the area, getting a heat index, getting an idea of what was, what exactly we had at real-time situation report back without getting our responders directly in the path of any byproducts of combustion.
My question is, why do you need so many of all these different items?
Well, it depends on what area it is. Now, what I'll say is that this was a blanket approach to throw ideas out. You know, I'm cautious how to word this, but I'm not saying that everything is needed and only specific to, but these are things that would be pertinent to it. Some of it's overlay that we're already using today. But there is maintenance, there's wear and tear. But if you go on the radios, we have to outfit all of our vehicles and all of our personnel with a radio. So if they're out and about, you know, we can't rely on their personal cell phones to talk. We've got to be able to rely on the public safety system. Thermal imaging cameras, we may take a certain apparatus to a call. So all of our apparatus have to be outfitted with a thermal imaging camera. Personal protective equipment, it's to outfit all of our personnel. We have fifty personnel in the department. And actually, our personnel all have two sets of gear. So if one is contaminated or needs to be washed, decon, they have a backup set. So as you can see, the cost of a fire department is pretty high. But basically, it's because of the number of personnel that we have to mitigate this because, you know, we're a 24/7, 365 operation, so it takes a lot. If we were just eight to five, nine, or nine to five, Monday through Friday, there'd be so much of a footprint. But because we're around the clock, you know, 24 hours a day, we have to have a bench and a relief. We can't expect our personnel just to continuously work, work, work. Those are pretty much the ones that were, the numerous equipment was outfitting our personnel to answer your question, I guess to the short.
Sandy?
My question, Matt, is I see you have $25,000 to $50,000 at the bottom to complete the project. I guess, did you happen to have any information on education and training for some of this equipment that is on here that our firefighters are not used to using?
That was...
Or did I miss it?
The bottom line there is for the BDA system, the bidirectional amplifier, and that's for that specific application. So if we put a BDA in a building, it would cost 25,000 to 50,000 because of labor. So if a company came in and outfitted a building with a repeater system, a small building might be 25,000, a larger building could be up to $50,000. So that's, that is for that part. As far as training and equipment, all of these on here with the purchase of... Lot of money. The purchase of equipment would come with initial train.
Okay.
That's part of the package.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Matt, could you speak to the Great Lakes Drone and maybe share? I know this is just idea stage, but maybe why would it be advantageous for the department to be trained with drones and have their own drones, maybe rather than rely on somebody else or instances where you've had to use drones from other sources? And if there's any kind of input from your site where you would see maybe if it would be beneficial to have the department have their own?
Yeah, so for sure. First of all, it takes the time to get, in particular, Great Lakes Drone there. So an initial call for us could be Kalamazoo Public Safety. They're a neighbor of ours. They're a staff department. They could deploy real time. But if they are on an incident and we needed it, they might be tied up for an hour, three hours, trying to, you know, find somebody, you know, who committed a crime. Maybe they're on their own fire, that sort of thing. Additionally, you know, for thinking about this type of incident, it may require more than one. So if we're looking at what do we got to do to evacuate an area, we might want one drone to look at, to monitor the conditions of the actual site versus deploying another one out to look at the evacuation area to see if there's plume changes or anything like that. So Great Lakes Drone in particular, that's an asset, that's an option for our area. But again, relying on a one and done of anything, it's good to have a bench with it. So the drone technology is so versatile nowadays, there's so many applications. I don't think we'd even scratch the surface when this came up to go, what exactly could we do with it? We'd probably have a small list and upon getting one, probably five years later, go, oh yeah, we've tripled that list just because of what you could do. So it's really endless for it, but to have a bench, an option for it, a real-time option, to have it not be tied up on another incident. And to be able to do the numerous things, in particular with evacuation considerations and monitoring, would require the use of potentially more than one drone.
Thank you. Amber?
I've got a couple of questions. The two-way radios, is that something you currently use? And so we're just saying, hey, this would be a tool we need to use, but it's what we already are equipped with? Or are you talking about something in addition to, for example, what's on your chest today?
So this one in particular would work and there is a lifespan on it. So we have different technology. We have a VHF technology that we're using today. And there is a push in the county to go 800 megahertz and there's, how are we going to do that? So we could be in the next couple of years, be pushed on like, hey, we're going to switch and you need to find a way to fund that. And half of our radios are not capable of doing both. So today, we do have the radios. We can mitigate incidents with it, but it's something we have to have and there's a recurring cost. So PPE has a life of 10 years and regardless of the condition, you can't use it anymore. And radios technology isn't far behind that, usually about 15 years. And we're going, hey, we really need to cycle this out. So it's just a recurring feed that a fire department would need to see and do it, so.
So high-end, quick math, because I didn't, you know, get into some of the nitty-gritty where you were talking about per person or per vehicle. But high-end, we're probably looking at somewhere around a million dollars for, not the drone, but the rest of the equipment listed here.
Yeah, SCBAs alone is almost a million dollars for us.
1.5.
Let alone the radios and PPE.
But some of that is cost that is natural. It's going to happen in Comstock, whether we have BES or not. There are charges there that, your radios, for example, right? Like you have to have them regardless of BES.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I have one more. Sorry. This is, you may feel comfortable answering this and you may not, and that's okay. But I guess I just would be interested, this is an opinion question, so just your opinion. Like when you think about a self-contained breathing apparatus, right? And we want to do that and I can imagine, like, you have longer standing exposure to the risks when you're evacuating, right? Because we're trying to get folks out, but you're there working through it. Is that why you see that? Or I guess where I'm going with it or what I'm thinking about is like, if we need that type of protective gear in a situation like this, in your opinion, does that also reflect a risk you would see for residents nearby? Does that make sense?
Well, it's a loaded question. I mean, it really is. So an SCBA is for our personnel, tested and fitted for personnel to do a specific task. So our residents, you know, if we were outfitting the public per se to do that, you know, that wouldn't be an option.
Yeah, I'm not saying that. I'm just thinking about like, at what point, I guess, do you decide or do you make a decision as a chief, as a firefighter, that, hey, we need to use this because the risk is great enough that we need to use it? And should that be something we're considering when we think about closeness or exposure to citizens too?
We would use it, you know, in the immediate vicinity or if something presented. So we would have monitoring equipment to protect our personnel to determine it also. So a safety going, we're not sure, it was an unknown gas, something you don't see. You would take a monitor, like carbon monoxide.
Right.
For instance, you would take this because you suspected it or you just didn't know what you're getting yourself into. On this situation, we would suspect that we would see something. We'd see the byproducts of combustion for it. So at that point, we would, you know, if our personnel were going to go in to do something to mitigate whatever the recommended practice was, to mitigate it or to evacuate the area or just go read the sign on it or confirm what we think we know. At that point, we'd put our personnel in it. But we would suspect, in this case, that, you know, there would be signs to determine when to put that on.
Understood, thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions before I move on? I guess not. Thank you, Matt.
So if there's anything else that I can help with, you know, narrowing this down or anything? It was kind of broad stroke on purpose. So if there's anything else, like you need something prioritized, narrowed down, happy to do that. I literally just threw a lot of ideas out there to help bring this down.
That would be helpful if you could prioritize this list that you gave us.
Okay, sure.
Thank you, Matt. I appreciate it. I think it's important that, in the instances and all the concerns that we heard from residents and researchers, we would certainly want our fire department outfitted with more than enough rather than need it, not have it. So thanks for putting this together.
Sure, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we will go back because I believe the attorney arrived.
That's right, and I can speak to it. I believe that this has to do with the language proposal that we asked for in the last meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong. And I think that it was revolving around two main points. One was related to who is going to be responsible for costs of actual alarms. So if the first responders have to get to the site, once an alarm sounds and kind of what that system would look like that we would put in place. And the second point was on false alarms or alarms that would be, you know, used during testing. Obviously, we mentioned that there would be a period of commissioning before the battery would go into operation where we want to test all the sensors, all the alarms and equipment that will be ultimately serving to alert first responders and public about, you know, potential issue in the facility. And we wanted carve out for those situations. And I think we presented a, an instance where, you know, we have a direct communication line with the fire department, with the police department and basically the first responders, where we alert them that it's a false alarm. So they would get a notification that there's something going on, but we would stop them before deploying, basically. So there would be two, actually, two kind of fail safes, so to speak. One would be the, you know, the text message, but there would also be a plan that we would be sharing with them in, you know, in instances where we would be testing so that they know that, you know, these guys are here for three, four days, they're going to be testing. So anytime that we sound an alarm, you know, we don't have to deploy to the site. Now, if even during testing, things can happen, right? So we don't want the first responders to just kind of sit back and hear an alarm, you know, five times within 10 minutes and not respond to it. So there would be, the fail safe would be, again, a communication during those times with, directly with the operators at the first, you know, first responder stations, whether it's, again, police or first responders, you know, fire department or ambulance to be on basically high alert, but, you know, don't deploy until we tell you.
Okay.
And we proposed some language, I don't know if, and forgive me for not tracking this down, I believe that it was shared with the attorney. You have it? So to the extent there is any comments, there any comments to the language and changes needed or clarifications are needed? Happy to provide that, but this was something that we specifically wanted to call out on, you know, the instances where, you know, we won't be, you know, deploying anything but testing and alarms are sounding so that there isn't kind of a, you know, false alarm charge, so to speak.
Anybody have any questions for this? Amber?
Not so much a question, but just a comment that in the language, it specifies any Comstock Township agency that would have to respond. And we've heard from Matt and we know that there's joint task forces. So I would just think that we need to ensure that those costs are not eliminated from this language. Does that make sense? So like, hey, we'll pay for Comstock, but if Kalamazoo, you know, if another neighboring agency is helping us, I don't want the township to be liable for paying for that as well. That's all.
I think that we did not adapt that language specifically, so that's maybe for you internally to make that change. Yeah, I will say, this will be, I think we mentioned this last time we were here. This will be guided, this kind of response to alerts and emergency situations will be guided by a formal emergency response plan that would be filed and revisited with all the bodies of first responder agencies. And will have to be formally adopted and approved. And we, I believe, shared the draft of what that looks like. So again, closer we get to the, you know, actually having a project and the final design, you know, the more accurate that emergency response plan would be.
Any other questions?
I have a question. On the bottom page, on the bottom of the page at number two, it says, "Any periodic or planned testing at a BES facility? No BES facility shall be held financially responsible for an emergency service response for an event that is not an incident." So that'd be essentially like the testing and the commissioning.
Correct. And...
Would there need to be language to indicate? Then whose cost is it?
There wouldn't be deployment, simply.
No, so...
So again, the emergency response plan will have a process, a standard operating procedure in place where there would be multiple layers of alert to the first responder body. One of them could be a simple text message that says, you know, "False alert" or...
Would there be any, during testing, any need to test deployment to have them actually be deployed? And then for language...
Yeah, that's...
For language on who would cover those costs?
That's a good question. I think there's a separate training for those purposes. We provide training for, related to the emergency response plan I was talking about, will be a training. I think it's periodic, I, you know, don't quote me on this. It could be every 18 months or so that we come and train the personnel. And I believe that there is deployment to the site as part of that training. So that's a separate formal training that we pay for. But that, you know, that doesn't necessarily talk about incidents, if you will. Like that wouldn't be based on alarms, right? There's a, it's separate from the standard operating procedure for how we deal with incidents and what needs to be kind of in place. And there is a separate operating procedure for the training. And I think that they, I don't know if it would fit in this language. That's my personal opinion, though.
Thank you.
One more follow-up to that. So thinking about alarm response, just even business alarms as they stand today, right? If my alarm goes off in my business and I don't answer the call, right? Like they call the store, they call me, I don't answer, and emergency personnel go out. Usually you get one gimme, you know, they're nice about it. But beyond that, you start getting fined. So is there, I understand that you're standing here saying, hey, we're going to tell you, you don't need to go. But what happens if that doesn't happen and it's not an incident, right? So like, it's a false alarm, but somewhere there's a lapse in communication... So like, it's a false alarm, but somewhere there's a lapse in communication, we deploy because, hey, we got her. And, but it doesn't, it's not qualified in this language because it's not, it's not a real incident. I think we need to think about that, too, just in language of if there's.
I mean, to me, that's, it's a valid point, first of all. It's, it's an edge case because we should in principle have, have two, again, two layers at least. One is sharing the plan with the first responders. This is going to be taking place, right? And then within that, we should have the second layer, which would be the direct communication. So the first layer should be taking care of, you know, let's, let's see if this is real. And there's a two-way communication, right? So there's a checking from the, is this real or is this not real, right? From the, from the first responder. And again, I think that a lot of this is taken care of in the standard operating procedure or emergency response plan. If you want to propose language here, we can take a look. I don't, I don't necessarily think that there's going to be cost incurred with false alarms. And, and I think that we should, we should address it in the documents that are going to be guiding this as opposed to document that in principle talks about, you know, what, what happens when. So I, I think, again, I don't, I don't want to, you know, I think, I don't want to get to a situation where we kind of speculate about edge cases as opposed to having like a platform for, for understanding of, this is what happens when, when we have actual alarm, we pay for it. This is what happens when we, it's basically binary, right? What happens when it's a false alarm? And nobody needs to know what happens when there's no alarm, right? So that, that was at least how we saw the purpose of refining that. But if we want to go deeper, happy to take a look.
I don't know, Steve.
Think the deeper, the better.
No questions asked? To clarify?
Yeah, I mean, I just think that my concern is, if I've learned anything in life, that money is the number one reason why people fight, right? So the more crystal clear you can be about things, the, the more you eliminate any of that.
And, and again, I, I agree. I, I see that as being, there's going to be a formal document that, that deals with this. If you want to make it, make it clear there, we can. If you want to bring it to this, to this document, again, I, no harm, no foul.
Kyle, Rob, any input?
Yeah, I have a question for you. When you guys are talking about doing testing, is that onsite or offsite?
It is typically onsite, and what it would look like is effectively, you know, you have a lot of sensors, you have a lot of alarms that, you know, that sound internally within the battery. And, you know, there's going to be, say, like a, like a horn sounding, right? Like something's going on, right? And we need to test that equipment periodically. And, you know, it, it, it happens all onsite. The formal training for first responders happens separately.
So with your onsite testing, is that a one-hour timeframe, an eight-hour timeframe? And what I'm driving at here, I'm wondering is, if we're trying to prevent false alarms and deploying chief, Boach, Smith team, would it be advantageous for us to have an agreement where your organization is working with the fire department and having fire personnel onsite even when you're doing testing? So we know that there's someone running in and out? Let the chief speak more to that, if there's any benefit in having someone directly onsite even when you're doing testing to help maybe mitigate some of Amber's concerns of these false incidents.
Again, I'll, I'll talk from experience, how we're seeing this. And you, you have different, different staffing in different jurisdictions. So people prefer not to have tied up resource somewhere for six hours if they, you know, especially voluntary fire departments that could be helping somewhere else if something happens. We took care of it, you know, we, we, and this is, this is again anecdotal of, you know, coming from, coming from other jurisdictions, projects that are, you know, not, not even ours, but where we are in live conversations with, with fire chiefs that are dealing with the same, same issue. Their preference is communication, right? Not having tied up resource there sitting around, not, not having anything to do as opposed to, you know, being, being there, ready to deploy. Of course, you know, being, being alerted anytime, you know, anytime this sound goes off, that false alarm, false alarm.
I don't want to respect that, no matter my kind of disrespect, it's great what you're telling me, but I wouldn't mind the chief weighing in on that, Mr. Martin.
Sure. I mean, it, it, ultimately, it'll depend on preference.
Yeah, Matt can speak to that.
Yeah, so not knowing exactly how the alarm works, but testing an alarm system is a very common thing. You know, they're very, like this morning, we had a company in our township that let us know they were testing, but many times what they do is they tell their alarm company, "We're going to be in test mode," and that's as far as it gets. It goes to the 911 or the call center for the alarm company, and then that's it. It never goes to us. So testing alarms, maintenance alarms, you know, we have alarms at all of our fire stations, and we do the same thing. We're going to have maintenance in later this week, and with, we have to call the alarm company, put it in test mode. That way, 911 doesn't get in a call that one of our stations is having a trouble. So I would, generally speaking alarms, not knowing this exact technology, that's generally the case. But one point I did want to bring you up, actually two, and this could be for the attorney, is that we do have, you know, two ordinances in place that we've been talking about that are already in place. So I don't know if this excludes it because there's a, this technology ordinance in place or not, but we have the Fire Emergency Services Fee Ordinance, and fire alarms are addressed in there. So three or more false alarms in a calendar year, we start invoicing. And we use it as a tool to ensure they comply, but if we're not getting traction, we start billing. And mean, and a false alarm is there wasn't an incident. So if somebody was cooking, let's say, or it triggered it, or the alarm worked right because there was a water movement and a water flow alarm scenario, we're not going to bill because it did what it was supposed to do. But if they didn't do this on their end, we would bill it as is today. Two, we do have a hazardous materials cost recovery ordinance in our township, and we do use this regularly. And it encompasses other fire departments that need to assist us. So if we had to call in the county hazardous materials team and Ashdod, Kalamazoo Township, Portage, whomever came in, essentially, they're going to do is they're going to give us an invoice, and we're going to pass it on to the carrier, the owner, whoever it is that, that caused that. And then we're going to recoup costs for us and our, those that needed to work with us to mitigate. So what I don't know is if having this other wording in place ties their hand on our other ordinances.
Yeah, so we would apply our other ordinances. So we have other police power ordinances as, as the chief has stated, and those would apply. So kind of what we're looking at and talking about are really part of their emergency operations plan. So it's not, you know, our ordinance requires a plan, they're going to have to come forward with a plan, and we're going to have to determine that that plan is appropriate. But they can be tied into our current ordinances within that plan. They could, you know, we can address incident recovery within that plan, but it's all going to be part of their emergency operations plan. That if we get a new special land use in, we're reviewing them to different criteria, that's one of the criteria. So the planning commission would have discussions with the applicant at that time over what plan they submit to you, and then what terms are in there, if they're sufficient or insufficient. If you feel insufficient, you send it back to work on something more sufficient for the planning commission. So no, it's all good stuff to talk about, like the, the cost the fire department will need, things of that sort that you brought forward first. But those are kind of down the road when we're getting into what that emergency plan looks like and what the fire department will need to address the actual application before us. Because it changes depending on what type of facility we're looking at. There could be different needs based upon the type of facility. So, you know, it really comes forward at the application stage. All good things to talk about in the committee setting, the planning commission setting that we're in now, just so you kind of think about what would the fire department need. But those kind of needs and things are going to be addressed on a case-by-case basis with the project that comes forward to you.
Any other questions for Matt?
One more question for the chief. How often is this even a thing? Do, do you find that residents hear an alarm? You know, so we heard it's going to be a loud alarm, right? You're going to tell us, "Hey, look, we're testing." But do we need to be thinking about a way that we're notifying residents that, "Hey, they're testing today." So when you hear those units sounding, don't panic and call 911 because we also risk tying up emergency personnel for something we all know is, and I, and again, maybe irrelevant to talk about now, but just while I have you here, I just ask the question.
Yeah, I think it's fair, and probably to get it out would be better than to miss it later on. But I, I think there's two things. One is the monitoring company, and two is they could notify us and/or dispatch 911 to go, "Hey, between eight and four today, we're testing it. If you get any alarms here, please call this number first." And that's very common. So they give the address and they go, "Hey, we think..." Now, if it's generic enough where they can't pinpoint it, they may dispatch on error of, "We want to be sure" versus "assume." But many a times, there's work being done, there's things going on, and it could cause disruption, burning. So if there's a controlled burn around, it might get some traction down in South Portage. There's an area that, next to 131, gets it a lot, and they call dispatch, the DNR hosts it, and occasionally one slips through. And usually, the fire department knew and like, "Hey, we're just going to go check it out, we're going to set one unit, set up everybody." So I think that there's two, two fronts that could be to help cure that issue.
Any other questions? Thank you, Matt. Okay. I guess from here, we move into the best ordinance workshop with CIP.
So I don't, I don't, I mean to open, open the conversation, but I defer to you on how you want to run this. We prepared a few, few things, updates on the project and sort of what we were thinking there based on our conversation last time. So we can go through that and, and see if there are any questions afterward, or if you guys have any ideas that we want to share upfront, we can do that as well.
Anybody have any ideas they want to share before?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to ask, to start this off, site selection, alternative sites, if you guys have found any that pique your interest?
Yes, sir.
And then as well as if it's appropriate, an update on the application to the state?
Yes, both, both can be addressed.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions before we start? I guess you have the floor, sir.
Okay, I'll, I'll connect.
Okay.
Video here.
Oops, sorry, Kyle.
Before we, before we jump into it, I'd, I'd like to introduce the team here. We bring different people every time we rotate them, depending on experience and, and what they do on our team. So obviously, we have attorney, Steve Esty here, you all know him, he's representing us both here in Comstock and the state process as well. Simone Marletti, you know, he's our staff engineer. Heather Newport represents our public relations. I have Kelly McGill standing next to me. He is our utility and transmission expert, also runs development for, for us, including Michigan, yeah, our Michigan portfolio. So we've been working with Kelly a lot on specifically transmission and how to get the power out of the system and to the substations issues. 25 years of experience with utility, by the way, so really, really at, at home with all those issues. Then we have James Zingston, who you know from, from our development team. And then we have Chris Doyle, who is our land agent or a real estate, real estate partner that has been working with us on alternative site selection as well. And with that, we can, I think, jump into the kind of presentation of the alternative sites that you are interested in.
Thank you.
You going to get the mic?
Do I take it? Okay.
We have to, we have to present from here. Yeah, yeah. So.
It's working.
Okay, so before, before we. Here we go. So last time, we were here on September 4th, just a little meeting summary. So we presented for the first time, I believe, the, the site layout at the original project site, including the safety features that we were building into the project and all the, all the sort of plans for how we, how we're planning on, ongoing about developing a safe project. We heard from the public and from, from the committee about the concerns and what we were, you know, what we needed to, to consider in our further development. We also, at the same time, communicated to the township that we commenced the process of filing with the, with the state to pursue a state permitting process under P A 233. You then presented the updates to the ordinance, including new setbacks and, and requested feedback from, from CIP. So obviously, it wasn't, we were unable, it wasn't possible to do it on the spot, so we asked for some time. And you also asked us to, to identify alternative sites for the, for the project. So here we are today. We're going to present that analysis of the alternative sites, present a short list. We've canvassed more than 10, 10 sites. A lot of them, unfortunately, as you, as you know, as we talked about earlier, it was very slim picking, it was very, very, we were very constrained with us personally wanting to be, wanting to be far from, from the built, built environment and, you know, obviously by the, by the setbacks that, that have been prescribed or are being prescribed. So we identified three sites that we're going to talk about, and then we would like to, you know, discuss the selection and the pros and cons of, of those sites and discuss next steps on, you know, once you, once you hear about the sites, what, what would be the natural next step on talking about, you know, potentially moving the project. So that's, that's the agenda that we are coming with today. And if it's, if there are any questions before we, we go in, I can, I can move, move forward with it, with it. So to open, we identified three, again, we looked at about a dozen of sites. We identified three workable sites. They're all in proximity to the, to the original site and to the substation, which is really the core of the project. That's the electrical infrastructure that requires the support that we're trying to provide with the battery. These sites come with, you know, different pros and cons, as I said, which we'll go in detail on, but this is just to give you a picture of, of what we selected. And to be mindful, we took the feedback from the, from the planning, planning experts here that shared the setback maps that we were looking at last time with the 300 and 500-foot setback as recommended by EPA, and all of those are considered here. So nothing in this, in either of these sites is within, within 500, 300 or 500 feet from built environment. And of course, we took into consideration also the 2,000-foot setback from critical or sensitive infrastructure in this election. So these are, these are all the ones that, that appear seemingly workable. To go into our assessment, so what goes into project development, just to give you a little, you know, little crash course on, on kind of what we look at when we, when we look at sites, obviously, having a site means nothing while having a plan means, means everything. We, we look at obviously the, the technical feasibility, the safety, environmental impact, proximity to the, you know, to, to the community. We, you know, we, we respect the fact that, that people want this as far as possible from their dwellings, and then, you know, whether, whether it's compatible with. And then, you know, whether, whether it's compatible with, you know, with ordinances and, and, and plans that the township is, is, is putting forward or, or county. With this, just to quickly kind of describe what's going on in these, on these three sites. So we have the, on the, on the left side, on the left side, we have the Beck's Farms Incorporated site. This is a quarry that's seemingly winding down the operation. It's, it's a pretty good site, we'll get into the, the pros and cons. However, you know, a portion of it is, is unbuildable. And as you know, we're, we're looking at two-phase project here, so we're, we're looking for at least twenty acres of workable, buildable area. And this one unfortunately is, is very, very tight when it comes to that. We'll, we'll get to the, the details, just to describe kind of what's, what's going on at a high level. The green areas, excuse me, the green areas are, are places where we can, where we can build or easily build the, the green and yellow areas. Sorry, the red and yellow areas are, are the ones where we're seeing some challenging topography or, or not recommended build. And, you know, the, the, the details on this. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah. Yeah.
So the Beck's Farms.
That's, that's Beck's Think, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, it says, the, the, this slide that he's showing says Beck's Farm is East K Avenue. But on the next slide, it's listed as M L Avenue. So I was like sitting here confused.
Oh, that may be, that may be a mailing address, so apologies for that, yes.
Okay.
That's on us, that's on us.
Thanks for clarifying that.
You're absolutely right. You know the town better than we do. I will give you that. So I think that the other one, the other ones should be, should be in principle the, the right addresses though. So going into the detail on, on those sites, we looked at the current use and, and obviously what the, what the plans with those facilities were. So let's start with site one, Beck's, Beck's Farms Incorporated. The, this is like I said, an active gravel mining operation. It's a zone in line manufacturing district. And it's, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a disturbed area, right? So we, we like the, the fact that it's a brown field and something, something else could be, could be built there without, with, with minimal ecological disturbance because there's already, you know, work going, going on site. The second site, Hickory Ridge Golf Course is owned as cluster housing district. It's a twenty, twenty-seven hole golf course with driving range. And the, the, the one thing that we liked about it was that it's a vast area. And it's, it's, it's really secluded from, from a lot of the sensitive points or pressing points that, that we were discussing here, whether it's built environment, whether, whether it's direct exposure to houses, whether it's visual impact and those sorts of things. And we'll go into detail there. And the third site is Nash Greenhouses, undeveloped agricultural land, zoned agricultural residential and surrounded by agriculture, industrial and residential properties. However, it's, it's very difficult to, to get to that site without workable easements or, or egresses, points of egress. And then it's in a wooded area, so there's a lot of tree clearing that would have to, have to happen. Now we'll, Kelly will walk you through sort of our, our buildability assessment and, and kind of what we look at and, and go into the pros and cons of, of each site as we, as, as we were, as we were analyzing them for the suitability for, for the battery.
Thank you, Jan, and thank you commissioners and committee members. I am on, that's good. So starting with site one, again, this is the, the Beck's Farm, the gravel pit. There's a total of forty-nine acres on that site. And with the topography challenges, we get to about seventeen acres of buildable area. And this would accommodate the two hundred megawatt side, just the first phase. It is open disturbed land. It is light manufacturing, so it comports with what we perceive as acceptable in new best ordinance. There's geotechnical limitations. This site does not have a reclamation plan on file. We do not know if it's grandfathered, given its age, or if that's gonna be a development problem. Site two, this is a site that's vast, a hundred forty-two acres and a hundred of acres of it are buildable. It has a couple of nice topographical ridges that kind of provide buffer and screening to adjoining neighborhoods, certainly the schools as well. So for that purpose, it's, it kind of stands out, it, it's further away as well. It's right next to this Jaguar substation, so we minimize the going concern of building a transmission line in your community, which I am going to, having done this for twenty-five years, I'm gonna make the broad assumption that that might be met with some controversy as well. So this has a certain amount of uplift to us. Site three, Nash Greenhouses. We, this was a exercise in our part to provide three suitable alternatives. This one has twenty-nine acres, fourteen of which are buildable. So we get one phase out of it compared to site two, which we can do everything we need. Lot of tree clearing would disturb an existing business. We cannot get to this site without an easement from another landowner who has said no. So we want to be respectful to that and not press against that constraint. So to kind of dig in deeper, we are leaning strongly towards site two, the Hickory Golf Course. And we can talk about the other, other alternatives as well and certainly field questions. The entire property has been engineered. It's generally perceived as geotechnically suitable. We'd have to investigate that more, has stormwater drainage infrastructure. It's kind of known hydrology and FEMA flood zone and hopefully suitable habitat. Again, all of this comes with having to have a willing landowner and a due diligence phase. So we bring this to you at a very high thirty thousand foot general idea kind of concept phase.
And we've, we've done a lot of the, the kind of thirty thousand foot view analysis on, on some of the critical issues that typically right off the bat can kill projects because we, we can't develop anything there. This, all of these seem clean with some, with some challenges that Kelly will probably get, get into as we, as we go through benefits and drawbacks. But just to be very clear, we, this is not shooting from the hip. This, this comes with engineering and environmental analysis that we, that we've done over the past month that we've been working on this.
Thanks, Jan. There's some really good nexus here with your guys' master plan. Both had one that was originated in twenty sixteen and then kind of confirmed and revised in twenty twenty-five. The amount of extra space on this property, and we're gonna get into this more, would yield itself to a, a pretty generous community benefits package. Again, the transmission line will be extremely short, measured in hundreds of feet, not miles. And there's lots of natural vegetation, buffer zones. So for those in the community that are concerned about visual impacts, which is reasonable, this site speaks volumes to appropriateness. And it's also generally further away, well, it's not generally, it is further away from the critical buildings that are outlined in the new ordinance. And, you know, we respect the community's feedback on that. One of the drawbacks we see is we don't know the soil characteristics yet. We're gonna assume, just looking at the layers in G I S, that there's hydro soils, might be hydrology issues on site. There's no classified wetlands, but we can see that there's wet lands. So we, we will need to look into that. To kind of square off the dialogue about the alternative sites, to talk more about Beck's Farms, lots of studies needed that mining reclamation is a big question mark for us. That can be really difficult to develop around. And also the transmission line that would come from the Beck site would be extremely visible to the public. Whether we routed it generally in the public right of way or we went overland, we'd have to deforest about a hundred foot wide swath to accommodate that. And we'd also have to cross seven transmission circuits belonging to consumers, of which they would have to give approval. And I, I view that as improbable with any sort of development timeframe that we would all want to align behind. Site three, the Nash Greenhouses, this is a workable site for one, for two hundred megawatts as is site one. But we have unwilling landowners, so we don't intend to push on that any further.
Just to, just to stress the fact, when, when we were talking about unwilling and willing landowners, we've, we've had conversations with, or approached all of these and, and more. These are conversations that, that had some activation energy behind, specifically the site one and two, the golf course and the Beck's Farms. And, and again, I think that what, what will be worth kind of showing further is, is what we were thinking. You know, we, we, when we, when we learned kind of what, what is feasible, what's not feasible for, for, for the, for the project, we kind of wanted to dig a little deeper on, on one or two of these. And we did the Gentile analysis that we don't want to bore you with here because that, that, that really didn't look very, very easy or, or, you know, palatable to, to the constituents. But at the same, workable, everything, everything can be done with time and money, right? And we, we wanted to just present kind of the concept that we have in mind for, for the golf course property and, and how that ties again into your master plan for, for development of, you know, of, of recreational areas as well as your economic development goals. Before we get to that, I, I want to show a picture here. We, we overlaid the, the buildable area where we even thought that the topography would not be as challenging with this, with this twenty acre area for, for both phases of the project. And here we're showing kind of the setbacks from, from built, built environment as requested. So you can see that here we are two thousand feet, a little more than that, from the, from the school property line that's going to the north. And we're about twenty-four hundred feet from, from the actual school building that we're able to see on, on the, on the maps today. And then everywhere else, we're, we're well above the considered setbacks from, from the built environment. And moving, moving on to the township master plan. So the concept here, and this is, I want to be very, very cautious here about divulging any details. This is, this is a concept, as we like to say, concept of a plan. You probably heard that one. It, it is, it is, it is genuine. It is something that we can do and, and, and would be able to do if, if there is, if there is support from, you know, the, the township and also, also the public and the, and the residents. We see this as an opportunity because of the vast land that we have there. This is a golf course that is semi, as, as we understand it, semi, semi-utilized. And this may not, this may not be true, this is, this is the landowner telling us, telling us that. There is, there is an opportunity to redevelop the golf course into a recreational facility for, that's secluded from the battery and storage project. That would be, say, to the north of the, of the, of the actual site of the recreational facility. But we could have recreational facility that would comprise of gyms where people can play, you know, soccer, basketball, floor hockey. We could even consider a swimming pool, we could consider art, you know, art facilities, either, you know, dance studios. Basically, bring, bring all in one multi-functional complex for recreation for residents. We understand that this area is, is going through, you know, a, a boom in, in school age children, that there is, you know, new housing in the area. We are again in cluster housing, we understand that, and that's, that's a topic for, for discussion. But we also understand that the township has a plan for putting recreation, recreational centers in the northeast quadrant. We're right there at the, at the, at the edge of the northeast quadrant, we're right at the tip of the northwest quadrant, if you will, with the, with the golf course. So right in, right around in that area that the master plan contemplates is, is one where, where recreation, recreational facilities would be, would be welcome. There is, because it's a already developed area, there's a lot of opportunity for us to, to build paths and to have people, you know, walk around just maybe like they do today. I oftentimes walk on a golf course and walk, walk the dog. So don't want to take that away at all. There is, there is, again, a prime opportunity to, to rebuild it into something that's, that's gonna serve the citizens year round. And even go as far as, you know, we understand that there's, there's issues sometimes and, and I want to bring this forward, it's near and dear to my heart. And that is, and I'm gonna fight for, for, for this one, for, for the community, and that is underprivileged citizens. So if, if we can also offer, you know, discounts or, or free classes for a handful of underprivileged citizens to go and develop themselves. As you guys know, like, there's so many great football players that came out and I think there's so many good, good athletes that, that just needed that extra oomph and, and support. We're, we, we're, we're able to, to bring that to the township and, and partner with local, local businesses to do the same. They just need the facility. And the, the project would provide sufficient revenues. And together with the township, you would figure hopefully out a structure that would, that would work where we would be able to bring this additional investment to the, to the township. Again, in exchange for hopefully making the school community happier for being further away, for being completely screened. We've done actually visual study on this, on the original site, and we see the trees in the visual study. There's no way you can see this, this facility from anywhere around. Chris, that, that has been walked the course can, can talk about that more. Really, you won't notice until you look at the map or until you fly over that there is a facility. So it's, it's a, it's, I think, what we think of as, as win-win proposition to, to the township. And one last thing I want to mention, and it's, is very critical. We understand that, that people want to be involved in what's going on in their community and, and they want to come and, you know, express their opinion when they're against it. What we would do in this case is we would invite public feedback on what they want on that site. When we're talking recreational facility, we want to bring them and be part of the process and crowdsource ideas. What would you like to have in the community that C I P can, with partners, can bring as, as part of this redevelopment of the, of the golf course? So that's, that's kind of the vision that we have for, for this new site, should that, should that become, you know, workable. And, and understand, understand that there are many things to, to dig deeper on and, and that's why we're here. And if we do it today, we're ready. If, if we, if you guys need to digest and think about it, we're, we're happy to, you know, come at a later time. Just, just one more thing to, to maybe mention is, is we are, you know, we're, we're also on a timeline. So if, if we could, if we could get to a, a workable decision, you know, on, on planning, zoning, all these, all these things that need to be done, we know that we're kind of out of the perimeter on some of these. So we'd be, we'd be happy to work with you. So that's all from us on, on the alternatives and I'm happy to start a conversation.
Okay, are there any questions for them?
I have a question.
Okay.
Would there be any plan for solar on that site?
Oh, it's too small. It's a hundred acres. You need, you need five, six, on this site probably five, but six, six acres for, for megawatts. So you're probably looking at a, at a size that, we don't like the finance, it's so, it's too small. So no, 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 no solar. No, it's, 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 I mean, to be, to be very, very clear, we want to put the battery where it's not visible and we want to, let me actually show you the.
Yeah, on, on that map, was that at, at the top of the ridge up there?
That's where we initially foresee it going as we dig into the due diligence studies. That'll kind of inform its final position, of course, in concert with input from the township. Really, we need a core twenty acres within that property of buildable land. And the rest of it's really available for kind of a public benefit. One of the other issues too, with the shading from the trees. Come on up.
So this area, this area here ideally would be for, for the recreational use. And this is already screwed, you would probably just dense, dense, make it slow denser.
The only thing I wanted to say was in response to your question, Mr. Mayor, is that the, the natural shading provided by the trees in effect provides a shadowing effect which would minimize any benefits of solar in that area. In addition to Jan's comment about you need five or six acres for even a megawatt of power. So it's, it's not a practical answer. I mean, it'd be nice, but it's really because of the benefits that this site provides for everything else. It reduces the ability to be of use in solar. And then even seven acres of solar, you're taking, that ends up being coming not part of what we would be able to provide to the community.
From perspective of the clubhouse, where, where would the, the battery storage be? Would it be on the lower part?
So we would, we would, we would take on the ownership of the golf course and, and basically redevelop this, this whole. area down here, which is about, and we can, we can take a quick look, just so I approximately what we were talking about.
Should be about 80 acres.
It's actually, it's actually 50 acres.
Ben, I don't think the battery storage is visible on the map as you see it right now. Is that correct, Jan?
No, 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 we, we don't have the overlay here. That, that's actually on James's map. They're not connected, but, but, but the, the battery very, very briefly would be.
East of Orange shows 40 acres on that.
Yeah, just, 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 just right here in this, call it like this area.
Jerry's divots out of there, huh? I lived just down the road as a kid, so I spent my younger years golfing all the time at a river.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so again, like, the, the, the idea is to, to obviously not take this event. We, we know that there was an expansion. We, we're trying to redevelop it for what we think is going to be better used and, you know, we know that people come to golf here. So a simulator, driving range, everything is kind of on the table. It just depends. We have an idea that we want to propose. We, if, if, if the township wants to get creative and again fulfill the master plan and, and kind of get behind this, we can, we can collect public input and for lack of a better word, make this a more fun exercise than the previous one.
So perhaps the, the lower part by the clubhouse would, from the road there, more recreational amenities in the top part?
Yes, cor- correct.
Getting closer to the substation?
Yes, we would.
Kind of jogs to the, to the west.
That is, that is correct. And we would, we would obviously do some tree clearing here and basically put the screen right here and it would be a thick one. So this would, you know, there would be a, a one-to-one replacement of these, of this area here to here. That's again conceptual, but to, to really screen this off and we'll, we'll, we'll have access to the site from, Chris, where was the, where was the road that we were thinking that right?
It runs a little bit to the left.
Oh, this one right here. Oh, yeah. This one right here?
It's a little bit to the left.
Here?
Yeah, you can't see it on Google.
Yeah, you can, you can see it. I know that there is an access road which is always, always important and.
Some of those measurements that you showed were from that area of where the proposal would be still those measurements would be that far from the school?
Yes. Yes, that's correct. So we would, we would, I mean, again, this is, this is early stages, so we would, we would take good care of the, of, of the setbacks and, and really, you know, really zero in on, I mean, again, as, as you guys know, like agreement in principle is the first step. So if, 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 if it's interested to the, to the township to, to explore this idea, we can, we can provide an engineering layout that will specifically say where the batteries would be and how far from everything they would be and, and then provide specific measurements of the actual containers and, and all that. And, and, and even split it between the two phases of the project. So I, I think that that would be the natural next step, but yeah, what you're conceptually seeing are, are real, real measurements from the, from the school.
And then while they're talking, my other question was, were you guys able to circle back and think anything about the property by the dam or is that one pretty much?
Yeah, Kelly, Kelly has.
Was very vested interest in that one.
Yeah, this one's near and dear to my heart. So again, I've been a manager at a utility on the, the other side of the country for a long time. So there's this agency called FERC, the Federal Electric Regulatory Commission, and they would need to be permitted to do anything in that waterway, either crossing the waterway or anything that would touch the lake. And that property is also highly contaminated. And then we're building a, a three mile transmission line through your community as well. We do not view this as viable in any way, shape or form, nor in the mutual best interests of the township and CIP.
Thank you.
Yep.
And, and just on top of that, this is a super front site, very hard, very hard to develop. We looked, we looked very hard as, as I tried to, as I tried to communicate last time, we, we took a hard look and it probably didn't do a good job how hard of a look we took. We, we spent, Kelly, what was it, month and a month and a half, just, just basically on daily basis, trying to whip consultants to, to, to help us, help us assess viability. Basically comes down to yes, there's a lot of stuff buried in, in there after the coal plant retirement and we, we've, we thought we found a workable way and then we were shut down by merely the, the utility that would not allow a crossing. There is also a different owner of this dam here that, that has the regulatory issue that, that Kelly was talking about. So there is, I would say there's a bag of issues that we would be in for 20 years to, to resolve. I mean, that's, that's, that's probably, that's probably right. I don't want to undershoot. I'd rather overshoot.
And then the other question with our overlay district that we developed was would that be an issue crossing because the ITC subdivision?
Same, same.
Cross the highway, then cross the waterway.
You can, you can find, you can find a way. So, so going back to the map here quickly.
And then if we circle back to the site for any other board member questions of the golf course?
Absolutely.
Those were my questions.
I think the overlay was down here if I remember correctly. This is the, this is the, this is the agricultural. So your, your crossing opportunities are anywhere within this corridor. We need to get, mind you, we need to get to this substation here. So the only possible ways are, you know, above the water, impossible basically. We would have to put a giant pole here. Nobody will ever allow, allow that. I don't know with, with what kind of sag, or we would have to put a 300 foot pole so that the line.
Unless it's the amenity, if you're looking for us to build a colossus.
And I believe that as a, as a committee, we weren't aware at the time that the Jaguar was the one and only.
That is, that is the one and only.
We seen that there was a substation and we weren't aware at that time.
The reason for that is also we're, we're nearing finalization of the studies with, with MISO. So MISO, the regional transmission operator has three-phase study that basically is, is nearing, nearing finalization and there is not an opportunity for us to, to, to switch. And even if we were switching, we would be go, going, we would look at that opportunity before as well. We would be going into more into the build area. So again, still the most workable option here, again, with, with, with some alternatives that we found that would work, but not, not many.
Any other questions? Well.
Jerry?
Jerry?
I just have one. So have you approached the people who own the golf course?
We're, we're going to bring Chris up because he's the one who's been having the conversations.
To, to give, to give uncolored, uncolored record of, of where discussions stand.
Sure. Yes, I'm the one whose letters you end up on community boards, in case you're wondering. Yes, I've spoken to, I will call them preliminary discussions with all of the owners that have been referenced today as well as the neighbors to the west of the golf course. Preliminary indications are favorable because we're looking at them also for possible right of ways depending on the results of your review of the Beck site. So we, I've, I've talked to most of those neighbors. The majority of them are willing to listen. Some have actually countered our initial offers as it relates specifically to the golf course. We're still trying to figure that one out, but I have met with them on two occasions physically and it is a discussion item. I'll call it preliminary just to protect both him and me.
Yeah.
That, but it is a possibility. We're both getting on in our ears and we're looking at the possibility of what's going to happen next and that conversation is four hours old. So, yeah, I, I get a feeling you know them, just to guess on my part. Okay. But anyway, that's where things stand. I, I've spoken personally and met with all but one of the people that have responded favorably and that's just simply a function of having had the opportunity. So, yeah, every, everything is, is active, promising and preliminary.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
That's a question. Well, I'd just like to say you did a really good job. The presentation has been great. It's really piqued my interest to have a giant community space for outdoor activities. I think the more outdoor activities a community can have is says, join our community, come, move here, be with us. I love it.
Any other questions? Amber?
Kyle or anyone else, help me out here, remind me. So the golf course is currently zoned as cluster?
R1 cluster. And R1 C.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, I guess thank you for your presentation and we will go into discussion at this point, discuss what was presented.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, unless you have something else to say.
I think Steve asked you. I just wanted to briefly address the supervisor's question about Act 233. I think you had asked for the status of that.
Okay.
So first and foremost, I just want to reemphasize that we think this is an exciting opportunity at this golf course site. It would require obviously some sort of a comprehensive community benefits development agreement that we would have to work on with council, but certainly doable. So in terms of Act 233, which we're, you know, looking at on a parallel path just because of timing, I believe three or four filings have occurred at the MPSC today and I'd have to check their website, but, so people are actively filing. There's, there's a complicated road to, to, to file. The first step is to me with the chief elected officer, which we've made a request, Mr. Martin to do, we still have to coordinate a date to do that. After that meeting, there needs to be a public meeting within the community that's not part of this body, but it would, for example, maybe be at the school or somewhere local that we would conduct. We have to give notice of that 30 days in advance. And then after that, meet with the MPSC and then ultimately file. And once we file, the MPSC's 60 days to determine if the application is complete or not. There's a lot that goes into the application, as you know, so it's a comprehensive checklist. It's all available on the MPSC's website, but we're sort of methodically working through that. It will benefit either process because a lot of that information will be required for the process to go through local zoning as well. These are things like, you know, studies, environmental studies, noise studies, all of the requirements that, you know, both your ordinance has and the, and the, the state process. The one, the one thing I do want to point out is that the, the golf course site, for all of the, the excitement that it offers for community benefit, under the current draft of the ordinance, it, it's not, it's a challenging site for zoning because it's not obviously within the classifications that you've identified in your overlay. But I mean, I think that's easily solvable through some modifications and things like that, but I just wanted to highlight that that is obviously a challenge that we've identified and, and something that would need to be worked through if that site went forward. So in answer to the, to your, sort of the short answer to your question, Mr. Martin, is that we are in the process of preparing it. We're in the process of trying to work with you locally. I mean, there's not an imminent filing. I think any type of a filing that would occur would occur probably in early 2026. So.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Attorney Thal? Yeah.
So what I was going to say. So what I was going to say is we can only go so far down the road with their plan, okay, at this stage. You know, this plan is, we're, fundamentally what we're doing is we're working on our ordinance, right? And so we're hearing about like, and, and it's, and it's good because we want to make sure if we're doing something that it's just not sending people straight to the state, you know, with what we're working on. You've heard a lot over the past months and you've been putting together a, a ordinance draft. You're hearing from them about a proposed plan, but we really can't go too far down the road in discussion of their proposed plan because it's really something that would come forward in the application and would be part, part of public hearings and so forth. So it's good to hear what they're, what, what they're talking about, that they've identified alternate sites, but we have to be a little careful. I'm just giving you some advice, yes, you listen to what they say and you have questions about what they say, but we're, we're really looking at our ordinance. That's what we're doing. They're helping us, you know, in terms of how they fit within our ordinance, but at the same time, our, our, our job, you know, the planning commission, the moratorium commission is to fundamentally look at our ordinance, make changes that we think are recommended and then send that to the township board, have a public hearing, send it to the township board. So I just say that because we don't want to go too far down the road with what their project will be or won't be. It's whether, you know, if their project fits within our ordinance, great, maybe, you know, but if it doesn't, you know, then they have options to go to the state. But really, we don't, again, we just don't want to go too far down the road with what they're proposing and talking about at this point in time. We really got to focus on, are we happy with our ordinance provisions? Are we comfortable with our ordinance provisions that we've been working on? And then working towards having a public hearing on it. I believe we have a public hearing set for the 30th of this month on the text and then the next step is to make a recommendation to the township board. So I just want to keep the focus on what really we're working on. It's good to hear the plans. It's good to hear that they have alternate sites, getting away from the school, which was a huge issue. But again, those are application stage issues, not really what we're going to be dealing with in terms of finalizing our ordinance, you know, for recommendation.
Sure.
Yeah. I, I think that's an excellent point. The one thing that I, that I did want to just sort of throw out there for consideration and obviously not for tonight, but as we move forward, maybe Kyle and Rob can, can weigh in as this process goes forward. But there's two types of overlays in Michigan zoning. One is an overlay like you've created, which is a specific area based on specific zoning classifications. And the other is what's known as like a floating overlay, which can be sort of moved around and kind of put wherever the, the community approves it based on certain standards. So, you know, one potential solution to this would be considering a floating overlay with the requisite controls and discretion that you would need to make sure you have the, the right to, to put these in the right place as opposed to a specific area tied to like specific types of zoning classifications. But I mean, it's early, I, I know you're working on the ordinance. I'm not here to tell you how to do your ordinance, but I, I just wanted to throw that out as a, as a potential solution that might work here because obviously taking cluster housing and transferring that to light manufacturing or some other is a, is a sort of a heavy, heavy lift. So anyway, that's, that's all I had to say, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Kyle, would you speak to that, please? Kind of tell us how that would all work for us?
Yeah, so first I want to thank Attorney Thal for, you know, reminding us that. Evan and I were discussing potential options for site specific on this, but again, it's helpful to go back to the overall aspect. So I think first, as Attorney Thal indicated, how do you want to move forward with your ordinance as it's established? And then second, as their counsel has indicated, do we need to look at a floating overlay district where we create still standards and regulations that are on our, on our zoning reg, zoning book, but may not be specifically mapped? I'm not opposed to that. However, again, you guys have been doing this since January of this year and you've been on nine months and I guess I'd ask a question from the committee and the commission here. How, how do you want to go based on what you've heard? Again, not so much for this site itself, but did CIP give you enough information or new thought processes that we can do explore? That's kind of the first question I think we have for Attorney Thal and I.
Amber?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Here's, here's where I think that my perspective is, is we said, hey, look, like our primary community goal is to get this further away from the school. That was the number one concern of the community. That's what this committee set out to do. That's what we were reworking our ordinance to try to accomplish. We asked CIP to consider other sites and help us accomplish that so that we could work together and compromise and they came to the table with something that does that. So my perspective would be trying to find a way where our ordinance doesn't prohibit or complicate. a site selection that is workable and supports what we were trying to accomplish by protecting the schools.
Thank you. Greg?
I would agree with Amber.
Joseph?
Well, I agree with Amber. I mean, that is what I think all of us want to achieve, but my question was going to be, how do we do that? I don't think we can make R one C a zone that permits this as a permitted use or a special use. You know, I'm struggling with, you know, I don't think we could attempt to rezone the golf course to something else. I don't know. I think we'd, yeah, I think we'd run into problems, right?
Well, I think, you know, kind of weighing in that, I'm not sure what your master plan calls for in that area, but there's always an option of conditional rezoning, too, which allows us rezoning to be tied into a specific plan.
I was hoping you'd have a workable alternative.
That type of alternative can work because you're tying it into a specific plan that they come forward, you have public hearings on, and, you know, and you have that level of control. We don't get to dictate the terms of the conditions in a conditional rezone. They have to bring them forward, but that can be part of.
And they have.
I haven't really, yeah, I really haven't, you know, I'd have to think more about different ways that we could do this within the ordinance, but conditional rezone is one way. I don't know if we could use your planned unit development provisions in here. I don't know if.
I wish we could.
Yeah.
In that case, then, I advocate for us trying to move forward with what we have because we have a workable ordinance. And if there's a way we can accommodate this proposal under the ordinance that we're working on, I would prefer to move in that direction.
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Go ahead, Kyle.
It's a great point from both Attorney Thal and Joseph up there, but, and I wanted to preface this, too, in order for a conditional rezoning to happen, we have to have it be based on an ordinance, right, for them to do that. So if we don't even have the ordinance that allows us use yet, we can't move forward in that regard. So it's, we're kind of getting to a lot of this chicken and egg thing here.
Okay.
So again, it's, I do want to applaud their team. Great, the past six weeks that they've done this, I think they've really helped address a lot of the concerns. But again, as Attorney Thal said, we need to come back now to the township as a whole, and then from there, determine what we've established and what we do approve. Is that an ability that could then work with an applicant after the fact?
So we need to go ahead and finish our ordinance, and then they can come to us and ask for a conditional ordinance? Okay. Conditional rezoning, excuse me. Ben, have you got something?
Are you going down the line or?
Well, I can. James?
Okay, I'm gonna say they've been good citizens trying to get in the township, to work with the people in the township. And they have went out and researched sites. They have talked to people. They are coming up with plans. I know from day one, they wanted to be right by the Jag plant so they can hook up, so it's easier for them and all that. So they basically have moved from where their location one was and tried to move to location two. And I look at they're going to do it one way or another because either they're gonna work with us and hope we can work with them, or they're gonna go to the state and go that route. That's all I have.
Sandy?
I don't know how many of you sitting out there know what happened with our R one C. But that was denied at this planning commission twice. It was voted down and passed at the township level. So I think for this board, it's probably welcoming to see something else there. So I guess, moving on, I'm really impressed with what you came up with. It showed that, it showed integrity. It showed you did what you said you were gonna do. And to be honest with you, I wasn't so sure you were gonna make it happen. Not to be negative because I'm very business orientated, but again, I do want to say that this ordinance is not just right being written, written just for you. It is for any renewable energy, and this board needs to keep that in mind. And that was all I had. Thanks.
Jerry?
I'm very pleased that you did the work to find an alternate location because at the beginning, they kept telling us there wasn't a other place, and so I'm very pleased that you actually went out and did the work and did this, and you did what you said you were gonna do. So I guess I'm looking forward to move forward here and just see how we can, how we can work with this and make it happen. Thank you.
Ben?
So the moratorium committee mission statement was to develop a community responsible plan that informs the general public of the rules and regulations of the renewable energy ordinance and analyzes the compatibility of Public Act 233. I think we've seen a little bit of all of that in here, that there's an option to go to the state. The board got together. We wouldn't be working as a committee on a renewable workable ordinance if we didn't want it to be workable. I don't think that there would have been any reason to form a committee. We would have just had to go to the state. So I think the goal was to develop something that was safe for the general health, safety and welfare of the community. If it were profitable, even better, but safety, I think, was at the forefront of it. A lot of the concern that we heard was the school. I think we've moved it further away from the school. Maybe we haven't gotten it one mile, but we're further than we were. And I guess one of my questions would be is that putting it in a safe location, safer location, that we would want to have the conversation of a little give and take and through our fire department, what could be some of those things on the wish list that due to the project being in close proximity to the substation that then, I like the idea of the community development, things like that, but we also need to keep in mind the forefront of the project and what things could be provided to our fire department that don't come at a cost of taxpayer dollars. And so I think that that would ultimately be the biggest win when, when almost three times, is that our fire department has more than enough, that it's in a safe location further away from the school. The township is profitable in this venture for the useful years of the life of the project. We certainly don't want it costing us money and then the township being in the red at some point over the years. And then the recreational amenities to match the master plan. I think that sounds great. I think our intention with the overlay district was how do we move it from them sensitive zones? But I think a little part that wasn't firing on all cylinders for us was we were, we weren't really understanding crossing the water, crossing the highway. So I think the same concept could apply, and Rob and Kyle, maybe you could address that, in our overlay, we weren't specific to a zone. Like in that overlay, it wasn't just ag, it wasn't just residential. So I think a lot of the times from the old ordinance, we think of like ag residential, and then that's where the battery plugs in. So how battery storage would plug in, so how on a floating overlay would that work?
Yeah, so.
Kind of moving our overlay idea and the concept maybe to an idea where it's more practical.
Right. I mean, you could do, you could take your overlay from where it was going to be in the areas that you identified before and identify that area as an overlay zone. You could have a floating overlay, as discussed. I'd really want to look at it more and advise you more on it than write, like, okay, give us how it would be done, you know, right now. I think it takes, I'd like to work with Kyle and talk about it, and maybe there's a better way to come up with it than a conditional rezone. Maybe there's a better way to incorporate into what we're working on here with our ordinance provisions, but you do have to be careful because when you put them in there, it's not just their project, it's anybody's project. So if you give some large amorphous overlay, well, maybe somebody else comes in with a project here or a project there or somewhere else where, you know, you really don't want to see it. So it'd have to comply with, you know, maybe you'd have to have more detailed provisions regarding overlay that would restrict it more than just how it was being restricted before was just by an area. We'd say it could go in this area. So you didn't have a lot of restrictions on how you develop the overlay. Now, if you're gonna have a floating overlay, you'd have to have more criteria for where you put the overlay, so that would take more time to develop.
We do not have the time to do that. I mean, it might be nice to consider that, but we need to finalize this and get this published. And I think what we have is workable and good enough, and there are other tools and avenues that we have to work with this proposal when it's a proposal.
Those are things that I don't know.
Yeah, well, you know, because it is set for public hearing on the 30th on this text, and so.
And there's no change in it now.
Well, there would be change, you can recommend changes, but it has to be.
Today's a workshop.
It has to be within the bounds of what's been noticed for public hearing. So when you have a public hearing, it's not set in stone what is here. You can recommend revisions because remember, you're making a recommendation to township board. You can make recommendations, but they have to be within the context of what is for public hearing. So, you know, we'd have to look at it, if there are some things we can tweak, they have to be within the bounds of what's been noticed to the public for them to come out and talk about. You just can't pop in something brand new that nobody's seen before after the public hearing. But there are some options to maybe tweak it a little bit after a public hearing when you're making your recommendation to township board.
Quick question would be, in the instance of moving things forward, if we just buttoned up what was here now, and that was the site perhaps that they were looking at, would then that not be a workable ordinance?
Well, I think it still is workable from the standpoint that, you know, we created a sensitive area. It was one of the primary things created in this ordinance, and it can fit within that, you know, it can fit within those bounds of that sensitive area that we developed. We developed that without knowing what sites are looking at. That was what you guys studied. That's what you figured out as a good setback distance from, you know, whatever we had, 300 feet or whatever it was before. You decided that was a good distance, so it's not really based on their plan, it's based upon what you determined in your research and put together. With that said, then, you know, it's. So we have, I'm just trying to think about it in terms of where we're at.
Shall we take a short break?
I mean, where we're, I mean, we could, we can talk about a little bit more.
I have a question. I have a question. Attorney Thal, is there anything that would stop us or would slow us down to just move the overlay district to the proposed site area?
No, we proposed this overlay. You could move the overlay.
Because nothing of that is set in stone at this point, and that way, I don't know, just, and we also then, in turn, thinking about other projects, protect that other space we were willing to compromise on from future projects because it's no longer included, and then we're kept to light manufacturing and manufacturing for any other future person who may say, hey, Comstock looks like a great place to do this.
Kyle?
Now, I'll defer to Attorney Thal and legality of the direction of it, but after your public hearing, you do have the ability to digest all the comments that you receive. If CIP would like to submit written comments on the draft ordinance, you can digest that afterwards and determine from there where you want to go. Just because we have the public hearing doesn't mean you have to set this right next away to the township board. You can still review, determine, solicit feedback from the public on this, what you like, and then if we need to continue workshop, I know we're stressed for time, but it might be some minor tweaks depending on the level of modifications you seek to do. We would hold another public hearing potentially December, you know, and then turn of the year, hopefully get it to the township board. So you can still receive public comment on this, look at those valid points that they brought up in the confines of this ordinance, but still try to move forward with a chunk of this.
Okay, because basically, they met all of our requirements other than the location that we set out as overlay. So, yeah.
So there's mostly 90 or plus percent of your ordinance right now, I believe, is in a good shape that we could still advance it. It's the determining, you know, what might be a good for a floating overlay or a static overlay or modifying the district in which this is proposed. So if, as Attorney Thal indicated, if we do a floating overlay, I'd want to come back also with some probably written recommendations to the commission of what's the benefits of a floating overlay, what we'd want to consider, do we need to look at, you know, minimum lot sizes for this? There's, I know, but it's, you've done a lot of this already, so it wouldn't be brand new, but we would want to do a more deeper dive onto that topic. Not a three-month deep dive, but a deeper.
No, yeah, I get it.
We need to have Attorney Thal review this change of language, too, that they propose because we should, you know, if it's going to be included or if it's preferable, we should do it now.
Yeah, certainly, we can, you know, so we're scheduled for hearing. It's within the, that type of provision is within the context of what we're looking at. Obviously, we have emergency plans that are in our ordinance. If there's something more detailed about emergency plan, that's something that you can add after the public hearing. It's within the context of what you're discussing.
Okay.
It gets a little more dicey, you know, if we're talking about overlays in one area and now we're popping it into another area, and if people see one area and don't have the ability to comment publicly on, you know, an overlay in that area, that can require further noticing.
Well, looks like the overlay that we created is not operative.
Yeah, the overlay that you created, I think you would just not move forward with. I mean, that's.
Go ahead, Ben.
Could we, as a committee during our workshop, get that over with and strike that off now?
So it's gonna be for public hearing, but you can certainly strike it, you know, because it's already noticed, is my understanding, for public hearing. So people have an opportunity right now to see our draft of what we're talking about. So if we're gonna strike that, you know, either we renotice it for, you know, you could do work on it and renotice it for earlier, another public hearing in early November, too. I mean, you, there's different options that you have, but at this point, you know, as it being set, you could have your public hearing, then strike it.
Can I ask CIP a question?
Go ahead.
So part of what we were trying to accomplish with timeline also is recognizing that our moratorium is ending, so if we're going to make adjustments to an ordinance, we need to do that before the moratorium ends, otherwise, the ordinance that stands today would be what it would be. Is there any appetite in, you're hearing what we're talking about, so I guess, and it's a, it's a good faith question, you could say whatever you say and you don't have to do what you say, but you've done that so far, you've done what you've said, so I'm gonna take your word at it. If we're trying to work through this and our timeline exceeds, but it's doing it in a way that is a mutual compromise, like, do you foresee that that's something you can be understanding to? Or, does that make sense, what I'm asking?
Yeah, I think.
So my answer to that would be, I appreciate the conversation so far, by the way, and I, and I, I'm pleased to, pleased to see it going the, in what seems the good, mutually, mutually good, good direction. I think that it'll depend on two things. One is the timeline, and two is the. One is the timeline, and two is the remedy to any sort of deficiency in the existing ordinance that we'll have to fix, right? And kind of how those two play together. I think that there's strong bias toward moving, you know, we've, we've been in the community for a good portion of three years, four years, trying to make this happen. We heard you, I mean, there was a change of teams, change of guards, like, ever since I've been here at least, I think you identified this. I like to stay true to my words and not overpromise under deliver. And, and I think that the team that we're bringing here today operates on the same premise. We, at some point, need to move fast. And so, so what I want to leave with you as an answer to that question is, if we can get an understanding on timeline and what Attorney here is talking about in terms of potential workable remedies to either, you know, using conditional rezoning, or, you know, adding potentially floating overlays, like, I think that, that should be thought about. I, I mean, from my perspective, and focus on the timeline, as you can see clearly. If, if that's not workable on the timeline that you guys are working on, I mean, you're clearly two weeks away from, from a decision, then understanding for us what we are up against if this gets passed, and then what is it that we need to do? Tell us what we need to do in order for this to move faster? And what kind of timeline are we on in terms of going from this ordinance that, that as is today, clearly won't support any, anything on that, on that particular, in that particular area? And how fast can we get to it being workable? That's the only question I, I have, and, and that's when I'll be able to answer, you know, if, if that works for us or not, so. Without it, I'm flying blind.
That's fair. Attorney Thaw, do you...
I would just say, you know, because I'd like to kind of consider and think about what the different options are, but, you know, the legislature often designs laws specifically to a certain property. And so you could have an overlay district and do the criteria that just meets that property.
Just the golf course.
Just the golf course, so it can fit nothing else. I mean, that's a common thing that's done in the legislature. They'll say, oh, this can only be done in a city between this population and this population. It's only Grand Rapids meets that, or something like that. So it's not uncommon thing to do in the law to tailor it to a specific site. So you could do an overlay district that is specific. It could be floating, but so specific that it only covers that site.
Yeah, just kind of react to that, and that's kind of where we were going.
Thank you, Attorney. And that's kind of where, where I guess we were going with, with our original comment. Floating is obviously gives, gives us opportunity to move around as we're trying to find the right target. I think, I mean, I think we found it with the best benefit package coming with the golf course as, as is today. If, you know, you guys have to confer and confirm that, that understanding with us, but I, I think that idea is kind of where we were going is, looking at the ordinance today, there's an, there was actually a conflicting, not conflicting, sorry, not, not, don't mean to, don't mean to, I should, I should choose my words carefully, words carefully here. It said that ag was prohibited, and then it was allowed, but then there was a, in the ordinance language, there was a specific call out to the overlay district for that, for that ag land. So if you look at the current map as it stands, there is a southern portion of the town that's in the ag overlay district. So despite the fact that the site that we're still on today is considered ag, it's, it's not an overlay district. So something similar could potentially carve out this golf course site out of, out of the, out of the current cluster housing zone, and, and maybe, you know, it's, it's a, it's specific. I don't, I don't know how, how that, how that will, you know, sway the, the decision, but that's, if, if, if there was a way that, you know, worked for, for both camps here, I think that that would be probably the, the idea that that's the simplest one to grasp and the fastest one to implement. So I, I mean, just, just my, my thought on that, on that one point.
Kyle, what's the quickest way of getting where we want to go? Mr. Chair, may I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
And Kyle and Rob, the school superintendent is here. Could we ask him for his input on, I think that that was a major thing that we were all thinking?
Yes.
Mr. Tanis, would you like to give us some of your input? I know you can't speak totally on behalf of the board, but in the direction of this conversation, I think as a major stakeholder in the community, we, we value your opinion.
Sure. Well, I did have prepared notes for the input from the public, and I had to rewrite them as I kept listening. So I am very much encouraged with the direction this conversation is going. If I'm understanding it correctly, that there is an identified alternative site, which is further away from the school, not visible from the school, maybe not even being heard from the school, because I understand these machines can make some noise. So this would be something that the district would support, and I don't know how it would help since we're not granted to you, but we would support the idea that this would be relocated to this alternative site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Go ahead.
So if we were to make modifications, we have to renotice a public hearing, right?
If they, so if the...
Like the overlay, for example?
If you make substantive modifications, then it would need to be renoticed.
So if we were to, if we were to adjust the overlay, that would be something that would require a renotice?
I think so, because right now, we've identified, you know, what, south of I-94...
Right.
In some ag properties as a, as the overlay zone district. And if we're going to, if we want to do something different with that aspect of it, then I think it would be substantive. If we're identifying other areas as the overlay, I think the public would want to know that as part of the public hearing process.
So potentially, and if we renotice, we have to give...
Fifteen days.
Fifteen days. So we're talking about roughly a, a small adjustment to the timeline as it currently sits.
So we could work with Clerk Beauchamp since our zoning administrator is out, and put another public notice out for your November meeting, which I don't have the date in front of me, but that'd be your next standard meeting to avoid one of these special meetings again. And as we look at that, I guess Supervisor Martin and Chair Nichols is okay with it, since Fire Chief Beauchamp is here, not to again put him on the spot, but just to ask for his 30-second overview of this alternative site, if he's got additional comments, and not to put him on the spot, but what his thoughts are, hearing the conversation now, move forward if he's okay with that.
Mr. Chair, quick question as he takes the podium. I think one question that we would want to ask, and maybe after Chief Beauchamp takes the stand, takes the podium, would be, it would, would a parcel like that possibly include more megawatt because of its size or, or, but then again, I think, I believe that we heard that maybe capacity is 400 for the substation, so just so that conversation happens.
Go ahead, Matt.
All right, so, you know, obviously being further away from the schools is beneficial from a, a public safety standpoint. There is part of it that there, if there is perceived to be a risk, that you're, you're moving the risk. So you're, you identified that the school is an issue and potentially neighborhood's away, and the school portion has potentially been addressed, or still other issues that you may or may not be able to work around, but there's still those public safety factors. So if there is a threat, and I'm not saying there is besides somewhat, we can obviously say there could be, you still have issues to work around.
Have we minimized it compared to what it was?
It, it appears so based on what's in existence today, looking at what's predominant wind directions.
Oh.
The school is, you know, being further away would, would help in isolated areas. So looking, I was looking at where the neighborhoods are. You still have the 102 North 30th. You still have apartment complexes on 30th Street to consider. There is a neighborhood, the Fawn Meadow Platte is still in a predominant wind direction, so there's still those factors. But it just depends on what, how much the perceived issue is. So if you take the school out, you have those other ones, so in the end, you are in that game.
Thank you. Any questions for Matt while he's there? Okay. Thanks. All right.
Quick question was, I think when we identified our sensitive areas, were those were the individuals that didn't have relative easy means of evacuations, like a nursing home or a school? I think that was in the, that was our main objective. And then, as far as the megawatts go, is that substation, is that maxed out at 400 megawatts? Would we expect to see more?
I can, I can confirm that, yeah, I can confirm that based on the current plan that the company has, there's no more megawatts than the 400 that we're currently studying for. And like I said, the first phase is almost finalizing its course, and the second one will, will be, will be running for a little longer, so it's at least, you know, I think at this point, we're, we're talking about 29, 2029, 2030 after. So there's, there are no other plans for this. And quite honestly, I mean, if, if, if we committed to the plan to build alternatives such as direct center, we would take, take away that space too, so that, that's another point of reassurance.
One question while you're at the podium. As far as if we gave you the list from the fire department, would there be things that you guys would consider contributing to the community to help ensure that this, this project doesn't come at a cost to our taxpayers long, long term for the safety protection that our first responders would need?
Yeah, I think, so, starting broadly here, so what we'll do, I mean, again, it all depends on what the consensus is here around the alternative site. If, if we feel like it's, it's workable, obviously, we'll, we'll put our best effort into, into creating, you know, a package that, that will be acceptable for review. Part of that package will be updated, hazard mitigation analysis, and all those, all those maps that we were showing with the, with the bloom analysis, dispersion analysis, and all that will be redone for the current site, so we can kind of confirm what, what Chief Beauchamp was, was talking about here. That'll be part of the package. And, you know, to the extent there are identified on this new site needs, I mean, you know, we are in a heavily wooded area, right? We're going to be away from it, but, you know, if there's equipment that they need to access, access the site, we do this all the time. You know, we, we, we'll work with the township to identify the areas. I mean, this is a, basically a village district, right? The, the first responders are, so they get, they get taxpayer contributions. We, we can figure out ways to work with the township to give, to the township as part of the community host agreement that Mr. Estes was talking about, the, the means or, and/or the equipment that they need. So I don't want to, I don't want to overstep here because we need to first see what the critical ones are. We'll obviously bring the experts back here to talk about, you know, the necessity for certain equipment that is critical for, you know, for the specific area where the best will be. And we'll, you know, if, to the extent there is an agreement, we'll, we'll provide that to the, to the first responders, if that makes sense. So I, I, basically to summarize this, this long, kind of long-winded answer, there's going to be update to what we've done before on the hazard mitigation analysis. Based on that, we'll identify, we'll go back and get back together with Chief Beauchamp, talk about his, his needs, and certainly take a look at the, at the list. But we'll also have to work with you on, you know, but we're, you know, we have community center now. We're trying to make fire department work, schools maybe. Let's, 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 let's see what, where, where we are going to, what the priorities will be. But we're, we're open to anything creative and collaborative.
Thank you. Thank you. I know you guys all want to break, but we should probably go to public comment before we break. Yes, Kyle?
Mr. Chair, Rob and I could, to be, I think blunt again, because you have, you know, limited time, we would ask for direction from the joint committee here of how do you want to proceed forward? Do you want us, again, knowing that we have a public hearing on, I would say 90% of the rest of the ordinance coming up in two weeks, your next meeting is a workshop where we can continue to work on more of the finer points that will apply across the township as a whole. But we would prefer direction of how you'd like to go, and to be blunt and honest, do you want us to look at an overlay or floating overlay district that would satisfy this alternative site or no? Question one. And then question two is, we'll, you know, move on from there, but...
What's the feeling, Ben? What do you... Shall we vote it out? Yeah. Kyle, want to help phrase us a motion?
Well, not so much a motion, Mr. Supervisor, but more just as a consensus from the group is, do you want to explore a floating overlay that would permit this parcel, this alternative site parcel?
I think most of us do.
Is there, I mean, I'm just looking for general consensus if that's how...
I think we should just run through the, like, at least give some, everybody an opportunity to chime in.
Go ahead, Amber. Go ahead, Amber.
I knew you were going to start with me.
You woke up.
Yes, sir, I did. Darn it. Um, yes, I believe I would be in favor of relooking at something.
Craig?
I also would be in favor.
Joseph?
Yes, I, I, yes, I, I was, I thought that that was the plan, that you were going to give us some alternatives, including the floating overlay, but different approaches for dealing with the, the situation we're confronted with.
James?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Ben?
Yes, as soon as possible.
I am too. So...
And to Joseph's questions, yes, we will continue to work on alternatives, but given everything that we've heard the past two hours, I wanted to clarify that this is a site you would like us to look at further and build off of this.
Okay.
Thank you.
I know everybody wants to, a break, but we...
No, we were, we were just recommending a break because I seen Attorney Thaw's gears were turning, and I didn't want to put him on the spot, and, and he was thinking for us, and he was trying to help us move along, but that was a lot to throw him at, at once. I think we are, are moving forward.
Okay.
You're good, Rob?
Yeah, I am, yeah.
Yep, so I was, he was really thinking for us, so...
Okay.
And then Kyle, was there one more thing that you'd mentioned? The second thing?
The second thing would be now we can, at your next meeting, move into the workshop portion of the, I would say, the remainder ordinance, the districts, the setbacks, the language, that you're all happy with that, because that's going to apply township-wide. So that would be what Mr. Martin...
Well, all we, what we really need is your guidance, your guidance on how to do what we want to do.
Yeah, but I want to structure it enough too with Attorney Thaw that at our public hearing on the 30th, we can still take a good portion of public comment on, again, 90% or more of the ordinance. So that way, when we have the second public hearing, we can focus on this overlay and have that established. So that's my intent with your actual planning commission meeting here in 20 minutes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Kyle, and so with that planning commission meeting that you guys have coming up, would, would that give you then enough to move forward with scheduling that second one?
Yeah, and if the chair is interested, I would still invite CIP to be in attendance to continue to work with us and give us items to that regard. But the workshop is set up to base any potential changes on the presentation that they gave us as well.
Okay. Well, at this point, I'm going to open it to citizen comment. A citizen may state their name and address and may speak only one time for no more than three minutes. This time may not be given to another citizen to extend their time. The person speaking has the floor, and no other citizen shall speak during someone else's time. During this time, you will be making statements to the board without the board, without discussion from the board members. But you are welcome to make an appointment with planning and zoning staff to discuss your comments further. Please keep comments clean and respectful.
Okay, Team Keeler, Sally Street. Boy, they got a lot of going on right now. See all these? They're all clustered and everything else. We don't want this. Comstock does not want this. You also have a trailer park over there. You have, like he said, the apartments. You have Fawn Meadows. There are a lot of elderly people there. These guys are snowballing, you guys, really bad. The stuff that I looked up, it took... The stuff that I looked up, it took the fire department one time. This just happened, I think, October 1st. Two hours to get a hold of these people, to put their, to come and help. The alarms went off. People were calling the fire department and stuff. Oh, we don't know who'd call. When we do call, the number's disconnected, or, oh, we're three hours away. By that time, the whole town could be burnt, burnt down. But they're snowballing, you guys, and they're threatening these people that don't sell their property to them, which I have from two people, Act 233. They're threatening, saying consumers can take their property if they don't let them buy it. These people right here. The guy that was in here the other day, they threatened him, said that consumers could take his property. They can't, according to Act 233. They're just trying to snowball, you guys, and you put it here, you could have more of a problem from the people. There's a lot of people that don't want it there. I mean, they may be promising you stuff, you'll never see it. You'll never see them again after they put it in. Eight, 10 to 1. Thank you. We don't want it-
Thank you.
-in our town.
I wasn't going to speak, but I guess I will. Yes, it's true, most of the township does not want this in our township, but I have to applaud this board and this commission for doing the due diligence with CIP on finding a place that was a little safer for our community. We can't stop it from coming into our community, we know this, so yes, we do need an ordinance for it. I just applaud the committee for doing everything they've done so far. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jason Tollers. I had a whole speech written, but I think I'm just going to speak off the cuff on this. I, like William Knight, would like to thank the board here. You guys have done a great job, I think, in developing, you know, comprehensive ordinances to, you know, guide this process along, but I am with the community here in that we need to reject this battery factory. There's no need for it here in Comstock. They are dangling in front of us treats and carrots, you know, trying to get us to buy into this community center that they'll build for us, or the money they'll give to our fire department to help keep us safe, but there's no need for this battery factory here. This isn't consumer's energy coming in here to help build a battery factory to level out rolling blackouts that Comstock has been experiencing over the last years. They are coming here to build this battery factory, and, and as they said themselves, there's no space for building solar panels here in Comstock, and we're not going to build wind farms either that these battery factories would benefit from. What they are coming in here to build a battery factory for is to make us more appetizing to the data centers and, the companies and data centers that want to come in and build data centers in here, which will not only drive up our electric costs 300, 400, 500%, but like the battery factory, will contribute to pollution and electrical problems here in our communities. So, I just want to ask, or I just, you know, want to put that out there, that I do not support this best factory. This community does not support this best factory. It will not be a benefit to our community, it will not provide us jobs, or long-term growth, or revenue, or anything for us. They will just come in here, build it, they will bring in their tech buddies to build the data centers, and we will pay for it. We will give them our land, we will give them our resources, and we will forfeit our rights to self-determination. And also, I would say, just let them go to the state. It is not a for sure that they're going to even get approved through the state. Right now, this act is still under contention, is still being contested in courts, as, and I personally believe that this law is unlawful, lawful, as it supersedes our right to self-determination as a community. So, that's really all I got to say for speaking off the cuff, so. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close public comment, and, um, do we need updates from other boards? Oh, yeah, you're right. I think I'm going to call it adjourned. We are adjourned at this point. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.